Hello?
Hi, this is the number we just put, so now we just got a missed call from this number.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the address. Someone just ran up, I was dropping my cousin off at home and three guys came up with guns and just took her purse and took her running. They had like a machine gun and something else and I can't call her because her phone was in her purse. Um, so I'm just... I'm trying to, it's over on Martin Street, um, let's see.
City, who's alert tone going off?
I don't know!
Are you sending someone out?
Yes ma'am, we're getting someone out now.
Okay, let... Lord, by the time y'all, Lord, if they were still lingering around by the time y'all finished the phone call, I don't know if anybody was in our yard or what.
The officer should be there saying okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm guessing they got dropped off on this street over here, because that's where they came from. And you can hear me talking, and so they're just plotting on approaching from the side. You can hear them discussing something, but I can't make out what they're saying. And this is me talking, you know, while they're on the side, and I heard something. And he told me to shut up, and as he got the gun, I mean, the purse, he's still pointing the gun at me. And then I'm watching the third one. And I didn't know if he was shooting at us, and that's when I go down to look out her back window to, you know, let him know, hey, it's good for you to go, I'mma run in the house. That's the video.
You go back and watch it, and, you know, it's like you're reliving the moment. What, what kind of goes through your mind when you go back and watch that video?
I don't know if it's like me reliving the moment, but it's just more so that happened at my house to me, like, as extreme as that was, really just happened to me a few days ago.
So kind of take us back to that night, like, what transpired prior to that? Like, because of course, you know, we see was at, at night or, you know, early in the morning, kind of just take us back to that day and, you know, leading up to that moment.
So, um, really, I was at home all day. Um, my cousin picked me up and we went out, and when she was dropping me off, I, you know, before you get out the car and you go back in the house, you, you know, say your final goodbyes, maybe recap about the night, and, um, I was about to get ready to go in the house, because I, prior to that part of the video, you could see me, at first I was talking in the car with the door open. Then I shut the door, you know, preparing to go in the house, and I sat my purse on the ground, and I was like, okay, well, call me, you know, let me know this, let me know that, and then I heard something. And it called me off guard, because no one walks on the sidewalks around here, they always walk in the middle of the street, so I always know to position myself that I can see if somebody's coming. But they were on the sidewalk, because they came from my front yard, and, um, when I saw them, I know in the video it seemed like a split second, but in my mind, I was like, okay, let me straighten up and watch them, and then when I processed, oh, they have guns, that's when I screamed, and that's when the guy was like, shut up.
And so, in that moment, when he told you to shut up, like, what was your, what was going through your mind?
To comply? I mean, because that first one, like, he was looking at me dead in my eyes, like, he was serious about whatever he was about to do, and, um, I didn't know what he wanted, you know, and he reached down and grabbed my purse, and he kept moving. So it was a sigh of relief, but that third one was just standing there at the corner of the house with the gun pointed, and so I'm, if you look at the video, I'm still staring at the third guy. And when he walks by, I'm a little relieved, and I start hearing gunshots, and I didn't know that he was shooting up in the air, and, you know, so I didn't know if he was shooting at us or what, and then, you know, I looked through the back window, and I could see him pointing a gun up in the air.
When they left, um, what happened after that? Because they stole your purse, right?
Yeah, and so everything was in there, um, my phones, everything, and, you know, people talk about shock, in that moment, I know I was in shock, because I told my cousin to leave when I should have, you know, jumped in the car with her, because I didn't know where they went. And so, um, I came in the house and I didn't have a phone. All I had was a walkie-talkie, and all city council members have a walkie-talkie, and they gave us an emergency button to press on there, but Mecca didn't know that we had walkie-talkies, so they didn't know where the emergency signal was coming from.
City, who's alert tone going off?
I don't know!
And so, the same driveway I just got robbed in, like, two minutes later, I had to go back in it, and I backed out the driveway, and I drove, I was gonna drive to Mecca, but on my way there, I saw some police cars, I want to say, like, close to the sheriff's office, and I flagged them down, because they, they were trying to figure out who was making this emergency call, because they thought one of their officers was in distress.
And so, when you flagged them down, you told them what happened, um?
Yeah, I told them who I was and what had just happened to me, and two of them trailed me back to the house, and that's kind of when the investigation started, and that's when I was able to use someone's phone, you know, to call people, let them know I'm okay and what just happened.
And so, what about your cousin? I know you told her to leave, where did she go, or what did she do?
She kept circling the neighborhood, but she wouldn't circle it in that direction, and so she called 911. And, um, that officer arrived about 10 minutes after we had all arrived back at the house. And we all came in the house, because I didn't have video footage, I didn't have access to, um, video footage and my computer, because I was trying to do something with my Apple ID, but they was like, in 24 hours, we'll notify you to verify your identification, and so I, um, was able to connect to my cameras on the computer. And that's when we pulled up the video, and that's when it hit me what had really happened.
I saw that an arrest had been made, um, do you know, kind of, I guess, leading up to that arrest, was there a, you know, how did that come about?
So, my whole family, all of our phones are connected on Find My Friends, so my, you know, called my sister, and, you know, telling her about what happened, wasn't even thinking about that, and she called back, and she was saying, your phone is at 804 Chestnut. And I know that neighborhood is right, um, behind my street, like, two blocks back, and so we told the officer, and we were just sitting around waiting, you know, we didn't have an update or nothing, and so my husband reached back out, but because they were doing shift changes, nobody had went over to the residence yet, and so we, um, called the chief and assistant chief, and they sent somebody over there, and when they notified us, you know, that they had apprehended someone, that they knocked on the residence door, but two suspects had jumped out the back window, and I think those are the two that are at large right now, and nobody was back there, you know, to surveillance the back while somebody's going through the front, and so we drove down there, and there was a young man sitting on the porch, and he had his shirt off, and my husband was looking at him, and he looked at the boy's shoes, and one of the guys that robbed me didn't have on a shirt, and had on those same shoes, and he, um, pulled the police over there to look at the video, and was like, that's one of them right there, and that's the one who admitted guilt to the robber.
So for the police to get there, it took two hours?
It was about two hours.
After y'all let them know that, hey?
Initially, yeah, mhm. And the guys, just so happen, were still there, still in that house, uh, two just got away.
And they said due to the shift change, that was the?
Well, that wasn't an official statement from the PD, that's just what an officer, you know, the officer that we told about the location, that's, you know, when we called back, that's what they said, that there's a shift change going on, and they're trying to assign somebody else to take this case.
I just want to rewind, so, because of who you are and who you are in this community as an older woman, um, and the, your cousin, um, making the 911 call, did they have an idea that this was happening to you, or just, um, or did she talk about the conversation between her and the 911 operator as to?
Uh, not so much as far as my status, I think they was trying to distinguish if I was a sister or a cousin, and, you know, that's pretty much it of what she shared about the call. Oh, and also that, you know, she was trying to let them know, like, I don't know if she made it in her house, I don't know if they're in there with her, she don't have a phone, you know, and so she was really trying to have a sense of urgency for them to come by and check. And that's pretty much it about the call, I don't think they knew it was a council person until I told them who I was.
But you left and found some officers, and came back to the house with them, and so, that was about how long? Because you said the officer, the responding officer to the call, then showed up 10 minutes later?
Came after.
After you had did?
Corralled some random officers on the street, yeah, and I can't really tell you the timeframe, because that was the time, all I know is I ran in the house, got the walkie-talkie, and got in the car, and shot down Main Street, and saw some officers, and pulled over and told them what happened, and they trailed me back. And, you know, I live right off Main, so it, it couldn't have been no more than, I don't know, 10 minutes. I don't even think it was that long. Because there was no delay.
So, it's, um, it's been a few days, how have you been able to, I guess, deal with the aftermath of what has happened to you?
Uh, I'm still processing it, I really haven't had time to just really be still, because, you know, when stuff like that happens, you got to, um, call your credit card companies, you know, I didn't have a phone, I gotta reschedule meetings and stuff like that, I gotta notify my job, and so, that's kind of what I've been doing those last two days. And I, um, I guess my gratefulness for not becoming what it could have been has kind of overshadowed a lot of the negative feelings about it, but I'm, um, I'm disappointed, I'm angry, I'm all of those emotions that a person should be feeling in this, uh, situation, I'm more so disgusted, you know, like, because these young men walk this neighborhood all the time. One of them, I was told, doesn't even live in Pine Bluff, but they come here and victimize the residents here, and it's just unfortunate that you thought it took three assault rifles to take my purse? Like, y'all just walking up to me at night was enough for me to give you my purse, you know, and let's say, you know, those triggers are almost hairline triggers, let's say one would have accidentally hit it, that's an assault rifle, those bullet casings, we found almost, um, 22 shells on my street when they were shooting up in the air like some fools, it could have ricocheted off of something, came back, but if one of those bullets would have hit me, I would have had a slim chance to live, and so think about it being an automatic assault rifle, like, why are y'all playing like this? You don't even have enough money for a car, but you got enough money for all three of you to own this? And it's just ridiculous, because at the end of the day, we all know, without those guns, who are they? It's just a bunch of broken little boys and grown male bodies, and I think the only way they feel like people will respect them as men is to put fear in them, and they're going about it the wrong way, because they're devastating communities, nobody should ever have to experience that, and all of that for a purse? You burned all my cars, you destroyed the phone, the only thing you got out of it was a .32 gun, I mean, what's the point? Just to be terrorizing somebody? And why me? You know? Uh, so that's the part, um, that's frustration, frustrating, and that's the real emotion that I keep thinking about, because that could have been, that could have went south, you know, and a lot of people bring up how they have guns, but if you think about a situation where three people are pointing an automatic assault rifle at you, I would have been a fool to pull my gun out. I, I couldn't stand a chance against one of them with an assault rifle. And so, it's just, um, it's just something to think about that even at your own house, you gotta have a level of awareness that you were just out in the streets and, on one of the, in one of the worst locations on the worst side of town, like, and that's disheartening, to, that that has become a norm here, and the citizens, the responsibility, it's almost like it's been put on normal citizens. I got the cameras, I had the Rottweiler, I got the, the gate, you know, I have the alarm system, and that still is not enough, this is a big issue here, and it's our, uh, crime dynamic is manifesting into something else. I was lucky that a trigger wasn't pulled, but I don't know what prevented them from pulling it, other than they just didn't want to, that wasn't their plan, but what if it was?
When you shared your video, um, on Facebook, it, it got a lot of, um, response, it got a lot of shares, um, a lot of the feedback was, you know, um, in support of you, but then there was a lot of feedback that, um, you know, viewed their opinions in, in a negative way, um. I don't know if you saw any of those comments or not, but how does that, uh, I guess, kind of affect you when, you know, something as traumatic has happened to you and people still don't see the realness in, um, what you experienced?
Well, um, I've seen one negative comment, that's because they took their time to actually come to my page and comment on my post, but it was hard to post that, nobody wants people to see them, they're vulnerable, but I just felt like, people need, what they did, that was extreme, that was like tactical style, you know, like, planned it, you go here, I go here, but one lady, I think what upsets me the most, if it was a stranger from somewhere else land, whatever, but to know that it was a woman from Pine Bluff who grew up on the east side with my mother, I think that's the disheartening part, that a citizen of Pine Bluff, and she was saying, um, don't believe it, it was staged, it had something to do with, um, a beef with her husband and Sheriff Woods, and it's like, it's not even a beef with them, but what, someone turned themselves in, someone admitted guilt, why would you even take it here? And that's, that's hurtful that, even if you can have all the proof in the world, all the evidence, you still have some people that are just so evil, and just so hard, and just don't want to see the humanity in any situation, that they will flip it just for no reason at all, I don't understand it, because I'm not built like that, but to know it's somebody from here, I think was the biggest thing, like, to make it into, I don't know, something weird like that.
Um, we had interviewed you about a month or so ago, and you had made the statement about, you know, you did everything you were supposed to do, you bought a house in the hood, you invested in your community, and, you know, you would never do that again, and you caught a lot of flak and heat, uh, but considering what happened to you, um, do you stand by that statement, and what do you say to people who, you know, gave you a hard time about that? As you, you know, told them, like, I, I live here, and I experienced this, you know, daily, it's becoming a norm, so, you know, kind of speak on that.
I say what I mean, and I mean what I say, and I stand by it. I think a lot of people, because of our love for this city, we don't like for bad things to get out, and I think us constantly sheltering the truth of what residents are going through here is what has made it worse than what it is. I'm sitting there in that interview, knowing that my property has been vandalized five times, knowing that I found shell casings just from coming outside, and I hear gunshots on a regular occurrence, and police sirens, and this, this, and that, and I think for people to get upset when someone is telling the truth of a situation, it speaks more about them than it does me. Pine Bluff has some truths about it, some truths that we don't like, but if we don't do anything about it, they might be in the same situation I was in, and I wouldn't wish that on anybody. Like, that, that level of vulnerability, those boys could have done whatever they wanted to do just from having those guns in their hands, and by the grace of God, all they took was my purse, which I usually don't even carry purses anymore because of my neighborhood, but I was telling my mom, thank God I had a purse for them to take, what if I didn't have that? What would they have asked for? You know, what if, when they approached, my cousin had already pulled off, and I was in my backyard putting the key in the door, who knows what could have happened? This stuff is real, this is real life stuff, and this is affecting so many people, and it's everyday average citizens that are being victimized out here in this community, and if we're not talking about it, if we're always talking about, we're gonna do this, and this great thing happened, all you're doing is setting up more instances for regular citizens to be victimized, if nobody is even talking about it? Come on now, that, that was a real situation.
And so, as a councilwoman, um, what do you feel, um, is the fix, or how can crime be addressed? Um, I know this has been ongoing, and, but actually, um, putting public safety as a forefront and a priority?
It was a series of unfortunate events, um, and don't get me wrong, I think our police officers was doing their best, but their best is not enough for how much crime goes on here. Um, police is, uh, they're not prevention, they're public safety, so they come up after the fact, right? And so, I do think that that needs to be better, and I don't know what resources that they need, you know, um, I, I don't know if it's more tax dollars, if it's more equipment, if it's more training, if it's more officers, if it's the salary, because we've kind of been tackling those things a lot lately, but let's talk about some preventative measures, um, housing, that neighborhood back there, a lot of that is Section 8 housing, the housing authority needs to do better at these young women who are harboring fugitives in these houses, they not supposed to have all these men sleeping in the houses, and it's not just these young males, it's a lot of females involved in this, because they're giving these guys shelter and refuge, guess whose house they ran to? Because they don't have their own houses, they ran to females' houses down the street, that's one thing, um, these slum lords who own rental property in neighborhoods care about who you're putting in these neighborhoods, some people are invested in these areas, do background checks, I mean, update us on what's going on, and you just, you just think about the totality of it, um, from code enforcement, that's something else, we're making these neighborhoods look like places where crime can exist and thrive in, and I'm gonna tell you something else, um, I think, we think at-risk youth just means all the kids, at-risk and criminally insane are two different things. The Bible speaks to it, you live by the sword, you die by the sword, so if these boys are in the streets, it's either one or two things that's gonna happen to them, they either go die, they go go to jail, and if they go to jail, it's because they have victimized somebody like me and possibly murdered somebody with something they've done. We got to stop giving these young males excuses for the behavior that they have, because let me break it to you, if God ain't got respect the person, everybody walking this earth has been through something in their life, and they need to figure out whatever hurt happened to them in their childhood, well, we get it, you done been through a failed school system, we get it, your household probably wasn't right, but when you become an adult, you can't use that as an excuse anymore, and you darn show can't use it as a reason to come out here making other people's lives miserable, you know, that's absolutely ridiculous that they, and you can't be that tough if the person that you're targeting is, is me, you know? And it's just frustrating all around, but there's so many things, I think, that contribute to that one moment, you know? And I bet a lot of these young men, um, are unemployed, I bet they don't have a skillset, I bet they can barely read, I bet they can barely add and subtract, you know, not all of them, but it's the truth, and so now they're grown, they don't have a way to make ends meet, and all they doing is taking, 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 a lot of these young people are on drugs, so they're not even thinking clearly when they're doing something like that, which is even more scary, you know, because they have tactical style rifles that SWAT uses, a bullet that would tear me in half, you know, and when you think about that, it's just like, when you think about it, and you understand the issues that contribute to it, and you know that most of the work you're doing in city government ain't even dealing with that. It's, it, to me, it's a cautionary tale of the direction that we're gonna continue to go in, and I don't know when enough is going to be enough, or who is gonna happen, gonna have to happen to, or to what extent something as extreme as that is gonna have to happen.
Any, um, any, I guess, advice, or, you know, um, that you would just like to conclude with, or say, I know we talked about, uh, investing in the community, but is it really worth your life when trying to do something for the community instead of what's best for you?
Um, I think when you invest in something, you expect a return on your investment, and I feel like most citizens are doing everything we're supposed to be doing in a buh, but there's no return, I don't have this extra sense of security, I never have in this neighborhood, which is why I go to the extremes, I have five cameras on my house, that was just two angles, you know, that you saw it from, and, I mean, I think we need to invest in ourselves, more so than anything, because if you invest in yourself and you, um, give yourself the things you need to thrive and grow and be a better person, I think at the end of the day, no matter what environment you're in, it'll benefit everybody that you're around, you don't have to just put yourself through these extenuating circumstances, and I, I'm really starting to think that's a cultural thing, you know, I, I think it's a, a kind of guilt that a lot of times we feel as African-Americans, you know, like, because we know that once these young boys get into the system, we already know the chances of them ever becoming a productive member, uh, uh, a productive member of society is slim to none, but at the end of the day, if they are adults, they gotta make adult decisions, and nobody deserves to be held at gunpoint by anybody, and I think it's time for us as a community to start separating ourselves from some of the people that look like us, that's victimizing us, to separate ourselves from them and call a spade a spade, they're criminals. And sometimes people are so far gone, my love cannot help them, you know, me being in the neighborhood does nothing but make me more so of a target, because you don't necessarily even belong in that neighborhood, if your choice to move there was to be the change that contributes to it becoming something that it's not, but, uh, if you look at my street, it's a beautiful street, it has so much history, I have a historic home on the national register, the issue is not my street, the issue is not my neighbors, we all communicate, it's everybody around us, and we got slum lords, we got people that's in and out, and all they do is just walk on foot, and I, I used to hate this feeling I used to have, I hate to see people walk through this neighborhood, I hate to see people on bikes, because they're not walking for exercise, they looking in every car window to see, is it locked? And they're gonna call their friends, I've seen four groups of guys start walking, two split up, and then they meet back around, and it's just them playing and implying, they walk by when you speak to them, because I speak to everybody, they, they don't want to speak back, and it's just, uh, you know that they're not here for any other right reasons, and I think it's time for us to call a spade a spade, whether it's a stranger, whether it's your child, whether it's your cousin, or whether the person looks like you, it is what it is.